I'll order the Planning Commission Subdivision Committee Special Meeting of April 16th. Can I have a roll call?
Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sol Fulkannick, absent. Commissioner Andred, absent. Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Lo.
Here.
Thank you. That takes us to our discussion item, Study Session for Zoning Code Update.
Thank you, Chair Commission Members. Again, we appreciate your time and coming out on a Tuesday evening to what is scheduled as our final workshop session regarding the zoning code update. And I'm going to turn it over to our consultant team to take it from here.
Thank you, Les. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we are going to cover a very limited number of things this evening. We're going to pick up where we left off. As you might recall, we were discussing Article III, which are really the development standards that apply across the city. Parking, signs, landscaping, so things that apply to all development. And we started to talk about parking, but we stopped at that point. So what we want to talk about tonight, and I want to touch on Number Two first on the agenda, is parking and loading provisions, and then close out with signage. But Les wanted to talk a little bit about a very, what's the word I'm looking for, a pertinent issue because the city, because you acted on it a couple of weeks ago, and the City Council acted last night on a medical building in the CG, actually in the Town Center Overlay Zone. And so we wanted to cover that first to see if the actions of the Commission and the Council might indicate that what's proposed in the code today might want to be reconsidered. So let me first put up the slide that talks about how medical and dental offices are regulated in the Town Center area, the overlay within the CG zone. And the proposed code, the new code doesn't propose to change the regulations that exist today. Just some clarification on what uses are affected. So currently, the code says that clinics and medical offices are permitted by right, where there is no arterial street frontage, so if it's not on Los Alamitos or Cotella. And if it does have arterial street frontage, it requires a conditional use permit. We are not proposing to change that, but as I've said, we've expanded that definition to make sure that people understand that that's medical and dental office as well as medical clinics and urgent care facilities. So all of these would be subject to that regulation. And Les, you want to expand on that?
So, Mr. Chair Commission Members, as you'll recall, a conditional use permit application was before you in January, and that particular location is within the Town Center Overlay area. The decision of the Commission was to deny that permit. And the matter was considered by Council last night. They upheld your decision. It was quite a conversation that occurred, a lot of questioning and dialogue and discussion. I think it really, in a lot of ways, paralleled, I think, a lot of the questions that you had asked of the applicant as you considered that matter. But I asked for this to be brought back for one more time for reconsideration in the language within our municipal code, because when it was before you in January, there were comments made with regards to, is this an appropriate use within that area of the community? And so I think that's something that maybe should be discussed further. And also, if it was deemed appropriate, what about size? If, in fact, there was the possibility of considering some amount of medical use, does it make sense maybe to put a limitation with regards to the size of that particular unit? Because, you know, a small dentist in a 1,500-square-foot unit or a chiropractor may not necessarily be, certainly wouldn't be as impactful as what was before you for consideration in January. And then I think even further is the relevance of proximity of the parcel to the arterial. Is it a matter maybe within the entire Town Center Overlay that if it were considered, maybe it should be conditional or permitted throughout the entire Town Center Overlay? And again, that's based on the comments that I heard from all of you in January, and I think also that some of the comments that Council made expressing concern yesterday evening with regards to the same situation. So I thought it might be good to take a moment maybe to revisit that real quick before we move on to the other items.
And Les, I'm going to have to do me a call. I aired, because when you and I talked earlier today, currently, you have the CG zone with the Town Center Overlay. The new code will establish the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, so it'll have its own zone. And for that zone, and this is based on conversations that we had earlier, study sessions, is medical and dental offices are, what the proposal is, they're prohibited on the ground floor, and in no case can they be larger than 3,000 square feet. So what I have up here is not correct, because for the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, it'll have regulations that are different than the CG zone for that smaller area. So just to repeat again, it's permitted by right, but only on the ground floor and no larger than 3,000 square feet. And that's for medical and dental offices. And clinics and urgent care are not permitted, would not be permitted at all in Town Center Mixed Use.
You said only on the ground floor?
Urgent and clinic, not at all.
Right.
Dental and medical, not on the ground floor.
Oh, you said you said.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Not on the ground floor and no larger than 3,000 square feet.
Questions? Just so we don't get too far out, too deep into this. Okay, so we currently have over there the CG zone with the overlay for the mixed use, right? Are we changing that? Are we now eliminating the CG and making this a mixed-use zone? Is that, did I hear that right?
Yes, it is its own zone. So it's not relying on the underlying CG as its own use regulations and its own development standards.
Well, this kind of flies in the face of what we talked about when we did this overlay. Okay? We, when the overlay, you know, there was not a whole lot of, I'm going back to discussions with the groups and I think even some public on the committee, I was on that committee. And it was made clear that this was an overlay zone and not the zone because of the existing uses that are there, okay? And that future development, we wanted, we wanted the CG to stay in place because it may not, in the end, it may not be practical for the multi, the three-story, ground-floor retail.
Nobody is forced to do mixed use. The way the Town Center Mixed Use Zone is set up, is people can do standalone commercial if they choose to. And we were very careful when we were going through the Town Center Mixed Use use table to recognize the uses that are there today. But essentially, if somebody wants to do mixed use, it gives them the opportunity to do that.
And where is that in the proposal?
That is in Article II.
Hold on. Do we have Article, well, we got Article III. Where's Article II?
That's not before you this evening. It's something that was provided earlier when we discussed Article II.
Can I ask a quick question? Is that overlay the one that goes like a narrow strip down the Boulevard to like Farquhar? Was it, because that was a while ago that we talked about that.
Yes, I think the southern limit is Farquhar. It meanders up, takes in the property with, where Keller Williams is. It goes a little bit further to the east, I think, to Reagan, and then also extends across Los Allo Boulevard, I believe one row of properties, and heads a little bit further north. So it's kind of that central core area right there at Cotella and Los Allo.
And it's drawn to reflect the boundaries that are in the general plan. All getting back to this consistency between the general plan and the zoning that this effort is charged with.
Well, I don't have Article II in front of me, and I haven't read it. I'm apprehensive, I mean, just knowing, knowing, recalling the discussion that was had and the importance of doing this as an overlay versus its own standalone zone. It was the fact that it was the overlay that gave the people the choice to either do the mixed zone yet still retaining the CG. The CG, they can follow the development standards and all that of the CG, or if they're going to end up doing the overlay, you know, the mixed-use overlay, that is an alternative in that they somehow would not be required to do a mixed-use development. Let's say somebody comes there and decides to scrape down that whole corner in there, but they don't want to do a mixed use. Okay? They want to do, they want to just replace it with another shopping center, two stories updated. They don't want to go three stories with residents on top and offices in the middle and retail on the ground floor. They have that op, they had that option. And I mean, I hear what you say, I need to, I need to see it before. I'm not going to vote on anything that I haven't read, because I've got too many, I have too many questions. I mean that.
We did furnish it to you, I think it was two meetings ago, and we can certainly refurnish it to you again. But we did go through it, I think it was either two or three meetings ago, and discussed it, but we certainly.
Well, we didn't discuss it to that, to that extent about.
We had, there was comments that the Planning Commission made to the use codes in the mixed use zone. So we did, we did go through it. Is my fault?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to focus on is the alternative, retaining the alternative of the CG, that's the distinction, okay? That you're not, if you're telling me that this is crafted such that they can ignore the mixed-use zone and build, in effect, a two-story shopping center with no, that's not a, there's going to be no requirement that they do a mixed-use project in a mixed-use zone, they can do what they want to do, as they could with the CG, then I guess I'm fine with that, but I'd just like to see that language. And if that's the way it is.
I thought that was the way it was.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just.
And that's how I understand it.
It is, it is how I've read it, too.
Okay, fine, okay, all right.
But I certainly would like for you to read it.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. We just keep going. This is, okay.
So again, if, as Laura just pointed out, there is some of that language in here under that Town Center, but even within the general CG zone, if you have an interest to change that language or to modify the language in the Town Center zone, we wanted to bring that up to see if you wanted to consider that in light of what just came before you. If not, we're ready to move on to the next item.
I mean, I think we might want to look at, I think you said it was like up to 3,000 square feet. I think we might want to look at making that 1,500, in my opinion. I don't know how the people feel, but.
Okay. I think we talked at the last meeting, and this was what came up with the use that was just appealed. And that was this notion of using 15% of ground floor in the CG zone, I guess so now we'll call it the mixed-use zone, on the ground floor, okay, on an arterial, that it would, the aggregate of office uses would not exceed 15%. And we, our existing code just refers to it as public utility, commercial office, but then further down under medical office, it's just with a CUP without the reference to the footnote which limited it to 15%. And that's what the applicant was, the point he was making. Now, when we were, when we were bringing up, we'd like to have retail and all of that, this 15% threshold, I guess technically does not apply to medical office, because medical office has its own designation in the CG zone that says all they require is a CUP, and the 15% threshold is not part of that. Now, at our last meeting, we decided to add medical office into this commercial area, or with medical office, we're limiting that to 15% as well, correct?
Well, I guess it depends on the zone. In the Town Center area, it's separate, all right? It's still identified independent of office, and it's clearly identifying, as Laura noted, that it's prohibited on the ground floor, and it is limited to not more than 3,000 square feet. It's a permitted use, but it has to be second floor or higher, and it can't be larger than 3,000 square feet.
On the second floor.
Or, or higher.
Couple of comments. On our February 27 PC Study Session, we did, we did add that for medical and office, that we were going to add the 15%. So I have a comment here that to add the 15% limit to office in the CG zone, and then additionally, in the mixed-use zone, we were also going to add the 15% maximum.
That's what I thought.
Yes. So both, the mixed-use zone and the CG, I have comments that we were going to add the 15% maximum.
Okay. All right.
So I mean, so. On the ground floor.
I think that was all, that was all encompassing.
It's, the comment for the Town Center is, in multi-story structures, offices may occupy up to 100% of the gross floor area in the second and higher stories, and up to 15%.
That's office.
Oh, that's the office, non-medical, ooh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for medical. It's a nice stage here.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We didn't have any 15% limitation for medical.
Yeah, for the ground floor.
We simply say it can't be on the ground floor. That's what the proposal was.
In the.
In the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, medical. And medical and dental cannot be on the ground floor, and would be limited in size to 3,000 square feet.
On the higher floors.
Pardon?
What's the three, I just got lost.
3,000 is.
No, no medical on the first floor whatsoever, in the mixed-use zone.
Okay.
And then up to 3,000 square feet on the second floor or higher.
Per, you know, per unit.
Per unit, okay, I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, so if, you know, Joe Smith comes in and wants to have his, you know, his practice, he would be limited to not more than 3,000 square feet, second floor or higher, but that doesn't mean that Dr. Jones couldn't come in and do another 3,000 square.
It could be all medical up there, it's just that one person couldn't have more than 3,000 square feet.
That's correct.
But only on the second floor or higher.
Correct.
So you still could have a medical building.
Would, yeah, you could, second floor or higher have, that's correct.
And a pharmacy on the bottom.
That's what I say, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so.
And a Starbucks, of course.
Can't have enough of those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So in looking at the, I hate to revisit all this, but in looking at, let's just use the center that we're, on the corner there, where you already have a dental office in there, you already have a chiropractor's office, you have a, an eye doctor, optometrist, but maybe that's considered retail because he's selling glasses, I don't know, maybe that's still medical. Okay? So those are now all non-conforming. If we change, if we eliminate the overlay, I'm just getting back to this overlay, because this, I think, was what was being discussed, is that if you, if somebody wants to come in and not do, not do the three-story mixed use, which mixed means, to me, means, first we're, you know, the three, the three levels with housing on top, you know, retail, office, then housing, then if somebody, if he just wants to go in there and renovate that center and make a two-story, tear it down, make it two stories, and start all over, then the existing tenants are gone. The, all the medical is gone because of the designation of, because we've changed it from an overlay to a, to a standalone mixed-use zone.
The question is, though, in doing so, is that furthering the intent of the general plan? And that's the balance.
And that also falls into line with Chase. It covers the south side of Cotella. It covers Chase, covers McDonald's, it covers the office building in between, it covers all of that. Okay? And I think that was the heart of that discussion that we had, you know, with respect to utilizing an overlays. The consultant at the time, and staff, I believe, Tom's not here, okay, but the staff at the time was wanting to come in with this mixed use, because that's, was kind of the flavor of the month then, with all the mixed use going on farther out, and the concerns we had. Frankly, I don't see it as viable, but what the heck, we'll put it as an overlay. If somebody does want to give it a shot, it's there. But we certainly don't want to foreclose out the CG the way we have it. So now we're foreclosing it out, and I just, I'm, you're talking about the spirit of the general plan, I'm talking about what, again, what was represented to us, and how it was, how it came to be is now being taken away because we're not, we're trying to be consistent with the general plan. If, it's kind of like, almost like a bait and a switch. I mean, a year later, we're.
I tend to take issue with bait and switch. I think there was, there was a working group involved with it, there was a lot of conversation. I was, I know I came in late, but I was at one of those, and there was a lot of discussion that occurred.
I think.
The issue here is that, as was explained, yes, some of these uses may differ from the CG, but the, it's not requiring that if there's redevelopment, that it has to be mixed use. There's still, there still could be a retail center established. Yes, this is one example where, there may be a couple others in here, but this is one example with regards to medical use not being on the first floor. But again, I think that's consistent with what at least I've heard from the majority of the Commission here wanting to see, and that is not to have the medical, or if it's there, not have it first floor to compete with the retail. So I, you know, we could certainly go back and revisit this and talk about it further, but I feel that really this Town Center designation is in line with a lot of what I've heard in my brief time here from the Commission. But we're certainly open to that, but the overlay part of it is a bit confusing to me because a lot of times you want to differentiate with your different zones and say, here's your parameters here, and it differs here from here, because you, ultimately, you would have a different overall feel for that area, that section. But, but here, I think what we've got is, is the idea that if there is the interest to want to do something that's of greater intensity in, with a variety of uses, that the tool is here to do it. And yes, there are some, there may be some minor differences between the CG zone and this zone, but ultimately, at the end of the day, however many years from now, there will be some difference there, we hope, as that area develops and redevelops over time.
Could I use a key example? Les, for example, in the CG zone, drive-throughs are permitted with a conditional use permit. In the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, drive-throughs are not permitted at all, with the intent being that this is to be a pedestrian or an environment which runs in conflict with having drive-through facilities there. And so by using the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, it's clearly identifying that this is a different place than the other CG properties. And that's the spirit of what the general plan's trying to achieve, and the zoning code carries forward.
I thought you would like the fact that there's no medical on the first floor.
I guess what I'm, I'm saying, I don't have a problem with medical on the first floor, I have a problem with it, with the, getting, yeah, dominating. I mean, we have a limit of 15%, which to me is, keeps that in check on the, on the, you have, of all office uses, office including medical office, okay? It would be, it's not 15%, it's 15% of all office-type uses, including medical office, cumulatively would be no more than 15% on the ground floor. So if you had 15% made up of a real estate office, there's no medical going to go in there. You've hit your threshold of 15% for office, office included, including medical, commercial office, either one. Max is 15%. Once you reach that 15%, there's no more room for you. Any other type of, including medical, is not its own little entity that gets to have, you know, it's like the first one that gets there is there. Once you hit 15%, there is no more office going in on the ground floor. Because to a certain extent, some of these offices, like real estate offices, like accounting offices, you have the tax office over there on, in the Vaughn Center, the H&R Block office. Maybe you have a dental office, maybe you have, you know, on the ground floor in the CG or in the CG zone. I have no, I have no problem with the way we have it now. The problem we had with this, as far as I'm concerned, with the one that was before us, rightly or wrongly, is they're coming in and you put them in there, and the office square footage now goes, we had that number, goes up to like 28 or 30% of the overall ground floor. Okay? That, that to me is what bothers me, you know? We were already there at 15% or we, you know, it's, for me, that's what it is. Now, I mean, I'm only one of five of us sitting here, but I mean, but.
Do you want to see some, some office use on the first floor?
I don't, I don't mind office use on the first floor, even medical office on the first floor, but I don't want it dominating, I don't want it cumulatively getting past the 15%. I mean, that, that's what I'm saying.
Well, on the second, third floor.
Second floor, I don't care. I mean, that's, yeah, let Dunham dominate the second floor. That's, your retail's not going to go on the, on the second floor, right? I mean.
A couple of options, then. The first would be to simply repeat in the Town Center Mixed Use Zone the regulation that applies to the CG for medical and dental office. That's, that's one option. The second option would be to bump down the 3,000 square feet. The third option would be maybe to keep it at 3,000 square feet, but also have a 15% limitation. And so, so it's kind of a combination of one and two. So, but it really, it really depends on the policy direction that the Planning Commission wants to take.
You're talking about on the ground floor?
On the ground.
Square footage?
If, well, number one, permitted on the ground floor, which would be the same way that it's in the, in the Town Center, I'm sorry, the CG zone right now. So the Town Center could mirror general commercial zone. Or it could be different. Today, the proposal today is different, but it could be the same.
Do we want zero? Do we want 15%? Or do we want similar number on the first floor?
Well, I think, I would be okay with like the 15%. I'm trying to figure out, you're saying 15%, but no one business could be in excess of 3,000 square feet on the ground floor.
Let's start back at the beginning. The first option is, do you want to permit medical and dental on the ground floor? So that's the first question to answer. The second, the second question is, if yes, do you want to put a limitation on either size or probably percentage would be the way to go, so it would mirror what's in the CG zone today? The other path of the tree is to say, no, we don't want to include it on the ground floor, and we want to put some limitation on it on upper floors as well. And it could be 3,000 square feet, but I think answering the first question.
I think in the, in the spirit of what Art's talking about, to allow 15% on the ground floor, I would be okay with that.
But that would be inclusive of office.
It's inclusive of all, all types of office. We're not talking just medical.
Yeah, so you can't say, oh, well, 15% of it is office use, and then another 15% is going to be medical, right?
15% is general office. No, no, it's cumulatively of all office uses, including medical. Just, I almost would say non-retail uses. I mean, to me, that's just, that's even an even broader.
Can you give us some insight on, because I didn't see the City Council meeting last night? Like where they were leaning on the issue? I know they denied the appeal, but I'm assuming there was more discussion about it.
I would say that their, a lot of the conversation was very similar to yours. There was some definite concern raised by two, correct my wrong, but two council members that I heard that said they just shared with the concern about having medical use in an area where retail should be a focus. But I also, there was also a lot of conversation and concern with regards to the vagueness of what they were proposing, that they were not definitive and descriptive. They just, even though they, as they did during, when they were before you, they did offer up, well, we, we could exclude certain uses, medical-type uses. There was concern with regards to, what does that really entail? What's the intensity of the use that's being proposed? So I think the two of those were really the key focuses. Then they also added in, well, the general plan says this area really should, you know, this Town Center area should be Town Center focused, and a 6,300-square-foot medical office just seems to be contrary to that, that policy direction. So I, from what I'm hearing right now, it seems to me, if, if it's a 15% limit, if that's what the Commission would like to see, then, I mean, we've, we've had this conditional use provision, I guess I would ask, then should it just be 15% period with no CUP requirement? Meaning, doesn't matter if it's a dental office or if it's H&R Block, it's 15% cumulative within. it's 15% cumulative within that, that center or that project, period. I mean, that certainly, it seems if that's really the focus with regards to a non-retail use of that space, I question if a conditional use of that discretionary permit is really needed at the end of the day. It's just flat out 15%. It doesn't matter if it's 15% of general office or medical office. You hit the 15% threshold, you're done on the first floor.
Right. It would make it easier on us as staff, I can tell you that. I'm, I'm with that, I mean...
Also, if we hit it, eliminate it at all, it'd be easy on you too.
Well, that's, yes.
Well, but, well, I understand. But I'm just, I'm just...
But what about Art's suggestion that it's not, it's not specific to office, but non-retail?
Just a non-retail, what about just non-retail? Or is that, is that too broad that you can't...
Yeah, my only concern would be that with, it's easier to exclude a specific use than to say the other direction. The reason why is what we, you look how retail's changed. Retail 30 years ago versus retail today, it varies, right? You just asked the question about, well, is an optometrist medical or is an opto, office? Or is it retail? 30 years ago, an optometrist office was an optometrist office.
Right.
Now you go there and they're, they're selling glasses and, oh, if you want to get an exam, we got a spot in the back.
Right.
So my concern would be that if we can say office max, I think it makes it easier because you could have certain service act, service uses in the future that are, are, would not be a threat to retail, that you would say absolutely that works.
Okay.
So what I think we're hearing is that whatever is done in the CG zone with regard to office, including medical and dental, carry it over to the town center mixed-use as well.
As long as the CG, the CG zone is covering what we're talking about here, like limiting office uses regardless of whether it's medical or non-medical.
Correct.
15%.
Remind me what the CG zone, CG zone says for the second and third floor? What is it, what does it say?
In the CG zone, in multi-story structures, offices may occupy up to 100% of the second and higher stories and up to 15% on the ground floor, subject to verification by the director through a zoning clearance process.
Right.
I mean, you're not going to get retail to go on the second floor anyhow, so...
No, you're not, no, no.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure.
Can you give me and Jose a minute to make sure we get all our notes pulled together so that we can get it right?
Okay. And that'll be irrespective of whether it's on an arterial or not. I listened to that conversation last night. I watched the, and there was a question of whether that building is really on, is on, it is on an arterial. The address is Los Alamitos Boulevard. So it is on the arterial, even though it is set back on the property. So I mean...
Can I ask for a clarification then, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Do, does that mean if it's, somebody said regardless of whether or not it's an arterial? If it's on an arterial today, it has a, it requires a conditional use permit. Am I hearing that just let it be a permitted use and the limiting factor is this 15%?
Yeah, I, I, that's, I think it shouldn't need a CUP if it's coming in.
I definitely don't want to complicate this anymore. I know we have much more to talk about, but I want to mention one more thing just for your consideration. The 15% parameter obviously varies based on the size of the project.
Sure.
So 15% on a acre lot is pretty small. 15% on 10, 15, 20 acre development, which we really don't have that.
You don't have, I mean, we're not...
But, but you could, like, for example, the subject property that we've been talking about, and if you include Shoe City at the corner, and if you said figuring a redevelopment of that site, 15% of that area could be the project that was before you.
Could be, but, but if it was...
So I just want to keep, I want you to understand that there could be one large...
But, but the opto, the optometrist probably wouldn't be there, the dentist wouldn't be there, the chiropractor wouldn't be there, the ones that are there now.
Right.
I mean, and...
Well, didn't we talk about it? Aren't they, aren't they already in excess of, they're already beyond what?
No, no, they're not.
Yeah, they're not. And that's, that's, that's the question as to, are you okay with one larger that could, you know, one larger medical use or...
I think we should still have the limit.
The 15, but see, the, the, the project that we had before us tipped it over. It ended up being like, what, 28%? I do re...
No, I don't think it was that. I thought it was right at the 15.
No, it was at, we, no, we're already, we're almost there because we turned down another doctor's office. I don't know if you, were you guys on the commission when we turned the, the one doctor down who wanted to be like across from the Thai restaurant? Because it exceeded the 15%. I mean, we, yeah. And so with, with this project, they might have still been under it, but once they, we put that, the project yesterday in, it took it to like 28 to 30%. So yes, I guess if he were to cut that building in half, he, he could do the calculations. He might get something in there, but not...
I guess my point is regardless of that specific, understanding that with a percentage, only relying on, on a percentage threshold, which if you're fine with that, we're, that's, I just want to make sure you all understand that because you could have one particular use first floor that's quite large if it's a new project coming in and it's a, it's a larger footprint of the property they're working within. So just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Well, let me get through the quick math here. Took an acre.
I like to have the limit.
Took an acre of 43,560 square feet times .15. Okay, so 15% in an acre is 6,500 square feet. But it's not the site, it's, it's the footprint of the building, isn't it?
Right.
So, so if you...
It's a total square footage.
Of the, of the...
First floor.
First floor, whatever they're proposing to build. So if you have coverage of what, about 50%?
Probably 35 to 40%.
Yeah, it's typically...
25 to 30.
25 to 30 for typical shopping centers, about 25.
It just depends if it's...
So let's say, say 30% coverage. That's 13,000 square feet is your building on an acre. And if you take 15% of that, 1,900 square feet.
How big is that center, like the land?
At the top of my head, I don't know. It's, it's...
Art?
I don't know.
Three...
Come on.
I don't know that.
I think it's got to be at least three acres.
But, but an acre, but an acre, in, in an acre, you're looking at about a 2,000 square foot office.
That's not much.
On a, on a, on a, allowing for 30% coverage. That's, that's nothing, I mean...
How about that, no real terms? I think I'll try.
I can be second floor, I don't care. You don't need first floor, believe me. You don't, you don't need the frontage, I mean, you really don't.
But it brings up the point, like, do, if they do, if they develop a larger area, would, would we want to allow like a single large medical use to come in and take that whole 15%? Or do we want to cap it at like the same 3,000 square feet?
So how many, how many feet? 3,000?
3,000.
I got no problem. I have no problem because the numbers are so, in an acre.
You're not going to hit it.
You're not going to hit it.
In an acre, right? But say it's three acres.
It's three acres.
Three acres and now you've got a 6,000 square foot.
Be 4,500 to 6,000. Yeah, it'd be 6,000, okay.
So we want to just let it...
But that would be, if we're, well, I'm just, I'm giving you, it could be one big office or it could be smaller dental office, it could be a mix of...
Right, but would we want to allow one big use to come in and take up the whole?
Yeah, then throw, if you want to put a cap in there, I, I, I wouldn't, that doesn't bother me. Because again, it gets into the realm of, is it really ever going to happen? Probably not, but it allows for that eventuality. If somebody managed to cobble together a whole host of property and do it, then yeah, put the cap in. 15% up to 3,000 square feet.
Things will happen, we might not be around to see it, but you know...
Up to 3,000 for one, what, any one use, any one office use or only medical?
Thank you for that clarification. Is it office or is it medical office that we're talking about?
Do we want it for all? Any one office use or only? Does this apply only to the medical?
I'm going to keep it all, I keep it easy.
One big real estate office?
Yeah.
Is that the direction? Okay.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But no more than 3,000 total?
15% max 3,000 on the ground floor.
Got it. How about if we talk about something simple like residential parking?
I'm for it.
All right.
Gary doesn't think we need any parking.
The, just to bring everybody up to date, we did talk last time about outdoor dining and the, that the parking requirements for outdoor dining were proposed to be adjusted and everybody seemed to agree that the standards that were put forward looked okay. So we wanted to instead focus on residential parking. And the chart on the left shows the recently amended regulations. The chart on the right shows something that backs off those a little bit because I think there has, there's, it was at least one duplex project that came forward that required nine parking spaces.
Yeah, I think that, I remember that one, right? It seemed like the parking department was...
It seemed, it seemed a bit, but in, I guess the area, what tipped it over, I guess, is what I would, I mean... Because keep in mind, we just had a big project come through, 109 units and they, they, they fit, they fit the plan and, or they, they met all the requirements. I think we've had two so far that's come before us, right? We've had, yeah, at least two projects that have made it work. And the whole idea was to help...
Well, but this other 50 was before we changed the requirements.
That was, no, I'm not talking about that one. We've had two since then. We had the 109 units and we had, didn't we have another project recently?
We had a five, fourplex unit, I believe, that came through.
It's been recent while you were here.
Yes, and it was the backside and they ended up having, they had different angles to get all the parking in the backside of it.
No, it was a duplex, it was right back over here.
Yeah, it was the, on the east, Old Town East.
Yes, yes. So we've had two, I think, I don't know, I don't know what tipped them over, made, made that numbers get so high on that...
On that one.
Unless, unless it was the, the...
Probably the bedroom count.
The rooms other than a bedroom. You know, where we're, we're making them, we had a, didn't we have rooms other than a bedroom? Rooms that not, that could be used as a bedroom, right?
Let me just walk through the proposed changes. First of all, on the left, there is a requirement currently that for, in any multifamily residential project, if it has a recreation room, there has to be two parking spaces that aren't tied to any of the units. Just two parking spaces. And we're proposing that that be eliminated because generally the parking that's being provided for the units, only the people who are using the recreation room already live in the facility already. So there wouldn't be a need to provide any additional parking. And that, that was the thought behind that. With regard to R1, the current requirement is two parking spaces, two covered parking spaces per unit. The proposal that we've put up there is that if somebody has a house that is larger than five bedrooms or fi, I'm sorry, five bedrooms or larger, and bedrooms can be defined kind of loosely, I would think, because sometimes the concern is there's a den that gets converted to a bedroom. And so the proposal is that if a house gets that large, that an extra parking space needs to be provided. And, and we've, we've seen this in a lot of other communities and some, and sometimes that, that requirement is as low as four bedrooms, that an additional parking space would be required. Maybe not necessarily covered, but it would have to be available on the site. The accessory dwelling unit requirements, you've probably walked through this painfully, but there is no requirement for additional parking for an accessory dwelling unit if you're within half mile of a high-frequency transit route, which is defined fairly loosely in the state government code. But also, an accessory dwelling unit can be built, can, can convert a garage. So if I have a garage on my property and I want to turn it into an accessory dwelling unit, I am not required to build a new garage to park the cars that I used to park, but I have to provide parking someplace on the property that's not dangerous and not taking up required open space. And that, that's state law for accessory dwelling units and how parking applies there. So we're not proposing any change. For the R2 and R3 zones, I, I think you can see that it escalates fairly quickly. And this may have been where the duplex that you, came before you started to get out of whack. If it had two bedrooms each, of those units would have had to have provided 2.75 parking spaces or if the, if they had, you know, three bedrooms, they would have had to provide seven parking spaces. So three, three and a half for each of the units. And I don't know the particulars, I'm just surmising that that, that was the case. So it, it goes up pretty fast in the R2 and R3 zones for parking. And so the proposal is that, number one, that a studio be just one space, assuming that only one person is living in a studio apartment. One, two, and three bedrooms, two spaces. And then some additional guest parking that would go with that. And then if the multifamily has, for four-bedroom units, you have to provide additional parking. So I think you can kind of walk through the math there. So it, it would bump down the multifamily to, to something that is what I would probably consider more industry standard. And then with regard to the affordable housing, that's also, those are also requirements set by state law.
What is that section in our existing code?
For parking generally or...
We have a table in there.
We don't have the current, yeah. I apologize, I don't have the most current version of the code with the parking that was established.
But it should be under chapter 17.26, or chapter 17.26.
So for single family...
Okay, well, excuse me, just a second. I'm reading what it is. Because I, it's not three and a half, it's, it is two spaces for the first two bedrooms of each dwelling unit plus one half space for each bedroom or other room that can be readily used as a bedroom.
I'm sorry, can you read that again?
Two spaces for the first two bedrooms plus a half a space for each bedroom or other room that can be readily used as a bedroom. So if you have a duplex, okay, you have, and there, what did you have? A three-bedroom duplex?
I took this from a chart that Andy Perera had prepared when we were...
What I'm seeing posted up here is in line with what I'm seeing online or as per the provisions outwardly to effect last year. So this shows for R2 and R3, one and a half parking spaces for each studio, two parking spaces for each one bedroom, two and three-quarter parking spaces for each two-bedroom, three and a half parking spaces for each three-bedroom, four parking spaces for each four-bedroom, and then one half additional parking.
Unless this code, unless my code isn't, are our books update, are our books up to date?
At the bottom of the table, it should have a code reference.
Arms are all 2014-13.
Yeah, must have been updated yet. It's ordinance 1804, which identifies a note of 2018 on, on what I'm seeing here. So what we have, what is listed up here under current is, is in alignment with what I'm seeing currently online with the most recent code.
And they were, they were recently adopted in 2018?
Yes.
That's what I recall from Mr. Perera.
Well, I... So four three-bedroom places would be nine parking spots.
Makes sense to me.
Under the proposed.
If you had a fourplex and they each had...
Fourplex and they're all three bedrooms.
That would be three times, I'm sorry, four times 3.5.
You know, I, there's...
Oh, under proposed, right.
I would have...
Nine, that's nine spots. Otherwise, it's third, it's 14 somewhere.
I, I...
A lot.
I wish we had a current code.
Well, I do recall during...
You know, I, I, not that I'm disagreeing with you, but I, I, you know, we spent a lot of time on this, going through this. a lot of time on this, going through this. All I know is we've had two projects come through, and so when I, when I saw that, or I heard that comment, that it would be nine, I mean, I go, what? If that's the case, we need to take, we probably need to take a look at it, but I.
I remember that, I just can't recall the specifics.
I recall, it was during the advisory, the zoning advisory committee. What happened was, there was one family, they came in that were, they were in the R2, but they had a single-family home, and they wanted to add a master bedroom. And with the new, with the current code, they were, since they were a single-family, but under the R2 designation, that's where the, the number of.
That's what it was.
And that's what we, and we, we, we need, we need to fix, and we fixed that, okay? We should have, I thought, I thought that we did, to fix it in the single-family, but in the multifamily.
Well, and actually, you're bringing up a great point, Commissioner DeMol, it's, what we're proposing is that it not be based by zone, but it be based by the type of unit that's on the property. So if somebody, in the case that Jose is remembering, has a single-family home in the R2 zone, they are only beholden to the single-family parking requirement.
Yes, and that, I, I thought we fixed that, we did fix that.
Current code is not.
I know, but I thought that came, didn't that come before us?
I don't remember, I don't remember that.
I think we talked about, we should fix it.
That we should fix that to make it apply that way.
That it ever got agendized and.
Since I've been here, we, there was a discussion we had, actually, through the, this effort that brought about why we're talking about tonight. So it was, what, what I recall is, you asked for the consultant team to, to look at this because you had some concern, there was discussion, as you just mentioned, Art, and that's why it's before you right now.
So we're fixing it now, so.
We're fixing that with respect to the single-family. I, I guess where I'm going with the, I guess, here's a concern I have. We just approved a project, okay, of 109 units that, that, that I will say probably reluctantly complied with our existing parking standards. That was, I mean, we had discussions on that at breakfast about how, you know, with, they're trying to use the, expand, use the right-of-way so they can increase, you know, what, what to count it, so they could get, shove more units in there. If we go ahead and roll this thing back, they haven't even broke ground yet. Are they going to come back in? And, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. I mean, I, I'm.
I would ask that you consider it two factors. One, as Laura just mentioned, the proposal goes away from a zoning district designation and goes to a unit approach. So that way, it would, if you have just a single-family residence, you're still only going to comply with it, you know, based on what's listed under single-family, regardless of what zone it's in. So if somebody in the R2 or R3, for some reason, just wanted a single-family home.
Yeah, that's okay. Is this all we're talking about? Are we changing the, the, is this only applies to somebody wanting to build a?
It's changing all of it.
It's twofold. The first part is going away from a, a district, a zoning district category into the intensity of use. And then secondary to that is, there is a reduction in the calculation, the number of spaces. So I would say, would look at it is, first, do you like the idea of going away from a zoning district designation and basing it on if it's single-family or multifamily, regardless of zone? And then secondarily, do you want to stick with the old numbers, the new numbers, or something in between?
Is, is that common to do it that way?
I'm more accustomed to what's under proposed. I'm more accustomed to, if it's single-family, here's what it is, if it's multifamily, here's what it is, regardless of, of the zone, because you do have that potential that, like, the R2 is a great example, where you probably have a greater opportunity to see single-family, but you might see a duplex or a triplex pop up if the density allows for it. That way, it doesn't matter. If you, if you're going to have more than a single-family unit on that site, your amount of parking is going to vary based on, on the scale. So I'm more accustomed to seeing that, but then the other question is, what, how many units, or how many spaces do you want to assign per the number of units and the number of bedrooms associated with it? So.
So I, I think, I'm in favor of the, having it be based upon the, the use, right? I think that makes sense, it solves that problem that came up before. Um, I, I think, to me, the discussion would be around the, the numbers, you know, really the multifamily numbers versus the R2 and R3, the current.
Right. I mean, I can tell you, two spaces for a three-bedroom is not enough. Two spaces almost for a two-bedroom is not enough, okay?
Well, and I think that's why we did what we did.
And we, and we went through that. You know, we have, we have a serious parking problem in, in these districts, okay? And, and, and what we, at least to me, the rationale was, okay, we're looking at this code, okay, we're, we are 99% built out, we are built out, we're 99.9% built out. We have our existing code, how, what did that leave us with? It left us with a major parking problem. We're built out, and we have a, a major parking problem over in the apartment areas. So going forward, how can we, how can we remedy that? We remedy that by, if somebody's going to repurpose their buildings, which we're starting into that cycle, then that, that we require then more parking, okay? You know, if they're going to repurpose it, they're going to have to come in with, with more parking, rather than to continue the way we're going, and, and just exacerbate a problem. Because if you're, you're taking properties now that have three units and we're putting six units on them, okay, and, and leaving the old standard, we, we're just exacerbating the parking problem. So if they're going to repurpose the building, then require that extra half a space or in this, in a two-bedroom.
Right.
Okay, because, yeah, they have two cars, husband and wife, and they have a kid, or it could be, it could be three adults. I mean, I'm getting, I'm getting three adults renting two bedrooms.
Kids grow up, and they get cars.
And the same way in the three-bedrooms, I got.
They all have.
I mean, we had, this is, this is like, we had this whole discussion.
We've already been through this, and, and, and if, if, if this is becoming onerous, and I guess that's, it was onerous for that person that was trying to do the bedroom. But we fix, we can fix that. If you're building a single-family, we fix that.
Isn't that something they can't come before us?
Yeah, we can fix that.
That, that gets fixed by having it be based upon the use.
Yeah, and so, but the multifamily, the only area that I could see that is, could be, the onerous aspect would be the other rooms that could be used as a bedroom. And that's.
The dens.
But that's the part in the, that, that gets into discretion now with us, as these come before us, and it's kind of like, is this really a, going to be a bedroom, or is it not going to be a bed? It's, we.
But I agree with you, Art, the whole reason we did this was because of the parking problem.
Right.
And if we roll it back, and they're putting double the units on the same piece of property with the lower requirements, the parking problem is just going to keep getting worse.
This, I believe, makes us below where we were before, even. I mean, it's.
I'm, I'm looking at the code, and I would want to do research on it, but my guess is that the parking standards that you had that are in the, the current version of the code you have are a generation after a lot of those units were built, because I'm looking at the code update numbers, and it looks like there were probably other parking standards much earlier on.
The earliest standard was one and a half, one and a half spaces per unit.
And so some of those may be parked at one and a half per.
They're parked at one and a half spaces per unit, that's what it was, for the longest time.
Oh, no matter how many bedrooms?
Doesn't matter what it is, one and a half per unit.
Oh.
In an eight-unit building, 12 spaces. And that eight-unit building is a one-three bedroom and four-twos.
And so it looks like that standard was updated.
That was updated to.
To what you have in front of you.
To what we have, and it's still, you know, because of what, of what's going in. So it's, it's.
If you remember, one of the people that came before us, or a couple of them, were wanting us to lower our standards because they have property here, and they're concerned that they won't make the money they want off of it when they redesign it and put multifamily units on it. They don't live in this town, and so they will not be impacted. They were only looking at the dollars and cents, which I understand. I'm looking at what the parking standards should be, and that's why I'm not in favor of changing what we did. I can tell you, a week and a half ago, I asked the person to come over to do some repairs, and there was no parking in front of my house, and I'm on a corner lot. I actually had to move my car out of the driveway and park it down the street so that they could park in my driveway. And that's sad.
Just as a reminder, we, we brought this back at your request, so.
Well, yeah.
We weren't, we weren't proposing to. We, we brought that as, and I think the one benefit, to be honest, from my standpoint, is going to at least the structure.
Right.
Getting it out of the zoning part of it.
Yes, yes.
If, if, I'm hearing consensus to keep the numbers the way they are, but just carry it over into the proposed layout configuration, but that, keep the numbers, and, and we can do that, so.
Yeah.
Give me just a moment. Guess that wasn't so hard after all, was it?
Once we all remembered that, we talked this topic to death.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're, you're plowing down our row of corn.
Those numbers, you know, they're, they're based upon reality, right? People, people buy a four-bedroom house and they have kids, but their kids grow up, their kids get cars, right? And, and, you know, that's, that's the reality. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, but to pretend like, oh, yeah, I've, I've got, you know, a 10 and a 12-year-old kid, well, yeah, but they're not going to stay 10 and 12 years old, right? They're going to be a day older tomorrow, and a day older the day after that, and pretty soon, they're going to want to drive to high school and do all that other stuff, right?
Imagine Gary down here, all three growing the same age at the same time.
Four bedrooms, four cars.
Seven cars. Do you?
You have seven cars?
Twelve in the family.
In the family?
Yes, triplet.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Well, I've got a, I've got a lady in a three-bedroom apartment, she's been there for at least 12 years, and now her, her, with, with four kids in a three-bedroom, and the kids are now all starting to drive. Well, she's got two onsite spaces, okay, and, and now we've got three cars, and soon to be four, and it's.
Okay, good, that's, that's good.
We've got good schools here, they don't move until after the kids are out of school. That's, that's the problem, they, they stay here, really, they.
And then they want to keep living with their parents, so their grandkids.
Yeah, now we're getting into that, I mean.
All right, with regard to signs, something that we found out when we went before the,
the ad hoc committee to, to create the code was that there didn't, nobody seemed to have many concerns about the signage requirements in the community, that they seemed generous enough. Businesses weren't complaining that they couldn't get enough signage to advertise their business, nobody complained about sign clutter. And so, the focus of updating the sign code, from our standpoint, was to, to make sure that the sign code meets current law, because there were a couple things in there that didn't meet some recent case law. Just to make sure that it was easy to use, the tables that are currently in there now are a little confusing, and so we wanted to redo those. We wanted to address a couple things that weren't addressed today, and the primary one was LED or digital signs, and whether or not the community felt that those would be appropriate types of signs to have in Los Alamos. And then, lastly, temporary signs, because this, again, falls under the, a requirement of a recent court case decision. And so I'm not going to go through this in, in great detail, but, hold on, let me back up. So just with regard to content neutrality, this is important to remember because signs are a free speech issue, and so the city cannot regulate what is on the sign. You can regulate its height, its placement, its size, the, the size, the size of the sign face, but you cannot regulate it by saying, and it has to have the business address, or you can't put a phone number on the sign, or it has to be all in English. Those are things that cannot be done. And so anything that even appeared to say that in the, the current code, we've removed to ensure this content neutrality requirement. I want to jump down to temporary signs. Temporary signs are an unusual animal, because they're, they're up and then they're down. But similar to permanent signs, the city also cannot regulate the content of that sign. You can say it's an A-frame sign or a banner sign, but you can't regulate, for example, nonprofit organizations, different from realtors, that might want to put up temporary signs. Everybody has to be treated equally, and this was the, this key court case that, that came down a couple of years ago. And so these were fixes that, that, that were made to the, the code. And we haven't had a chance to, to really talk to Michael yet to see if there's anything else that we need to tweak to it, but those are the, the main things, and so if you have questions about signs, we're happy to answer them.
Does that include, like, there's a building on that office, medical building on Bloomfield and Cotella, that recently got redone, it looks really nice, but the place upstairs that faces Cotella, all the windows are covered with signs, it's some kind of, I don't know, he might be like, plastic surgeon, or, it's all, he does something with.
There, there's a requirement, and it, it's in your code today, and it's carried forward, that on a window, no more than 25% of the window can be covered with signage, and so if that's the case.
There, all four windows are completely covered.
On Bloomfield?
Uh-huh.
Right there on the, the new building. Well, not the new building.
The one that got redone, yeah, where Dr. Poe is.
Almost like a, with a question mark, whether you call it a sign or not, right? It's like a picture.
Yeah, it's a.
I would, I would call it a sign, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, you could argue.
It's like advertising, kind of, I guess, whatever he does there.
It's like an artist or something like that.
Yeah.
But it, but it, but it's a photo, for people who can't read, it's still communicating.
I would just call it that, I'm just saying you could argue, someone could argue. It's almost like a wrap, something like a.
Yeah.
Window wrap.
Right.
Yeah, it sounds like it's, I haven't seen it, but I've seen the lovely halo-lit signs that are put up, it's really nice, but we'll take a peek at that, we'll have our code enforcement.
I know.
And, and the two reasons for limiting the coverage of window signs, one's aesthetic, but one's public safety, too. You want to make sure that the fire and police personnel can look into a building.
We have some pretty tall police.
And if the shades are drawn, you can't see them.
We had that problem with the Chase Bank, and they were really good about reducing their signage.
I, what I wanted to point out with regard to digital signs is that the, the proposed regulations is that they do be allowed as both a permanent sign, as well as temporary or window signs behind the window, in the window sign, it would still have to conform to that 25% limitation. But if somebody wanted to put a ground-based monument sign that wasn't static, instead that it's a digital display, the proposed code would allow that. There are regulations with regard to brightness, there are a lot of industry standards that have been set up, or that have been established to ensure traffic safety and, and not distract anybody, and that usually has to do with the brightness and the, the minimum dwell time, and so it can only turn over no fewer than, than eight seconds.
There's a, as far as the content neutrality, that, are we talking about, like, would you be allowed to have, like, a video running on a sign like that? Or is that, has that become a distraction issue?
It, it usually, there's, there are regulations about not having anything that's moving on there, so that the only thing that can change is when it's moving from one image to the next, whether it's a picture or language, but you can't have something moving on there.
Right, okay, good.
We, we made sure the language, again, it has to be a stationary copy that's presented for a minimum of eight seconds, and that it has to transition immediately to the next copy. So you can't have it waving or dancing or anything, and then again, the copy has to be stationary, it can't wiggle, move, or be video. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of science, I guess, some behind all this, and the, the issue of the amount of time that somebody actually can quickly read something and not be drawn away too long and be distracted, and that's why the eight-second rule is, is a, is really an industry standard for a lot of, anybody that's really wanting to minimize distraction, so it's long enough where somebody can glance, look back, and glance maybe once or twice to, to capture it without being pulled away from what's ahead of them, so. It's, it, but it's a real sensitive matter. I mean, we brought this up, we don't have any, anything per se in the code right now, even though we do have, I believe, two businesses, well, one business and a church in our community that currently have digital signs, but they're the older type of technology. Now you're getting that technology that really is, it's a large TV screen that goes out there.
Yeah.
But, but they also provide some pretty nice imagery, too, especially if we're saying it has to be stationary, you could have some really nice creative displays that occur. So we just wanted to include that for your consideration and see what, what you think.
If I may, could I ask one question? Can, can you confirm whether there's, remains prohibitions on off-site advertising? So when we're talking about a digital display, my sense is that what we're really talking about is an informational display that's relevant to the use, that it's adjacent to or related to, correct?
Exactly correct, it's not a bill, it's not a.
Buy Coca-Cola.
Not a billboard.
Right, it's not a digital billboard, it has to be something having to do with the business that's on site. It has to be something having to do with the business that's onsite.
On signs, under prohibited signs, in particular, number five, signs used for the sole purpose of advertising, property for sale, leased or rental, provided that, and then you list everything that's allowed. And the signs, the dimensions are okay. The, I guess my question would be, open house signs, stuff like that? Since I'm, I mean, I'm in the business, but I'm not really active in the business, okay? But I understand.
Those would not be permitted on public property.
Open house signs?
Open house, direct, if a realtor wants to go out on a weekend and put signs up on the sidewalk saying, "Open house this way", those cannot be on the sidewalk or the street, or the parkway, or anything that's public property. That's probably.
Then how are you going to find that open house? I mean, they're always on public property.
You can ask the property owner at the corner if you can put it on their property directing it.
Well, I guess.
Is that a change from existing?
Like, we're silent.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, there's discussion over on that side. My, I don't know, but that is a, a very common, common practice to not allow them on public property is probably one of the most violated provisions of a sign code.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. If that's current, then it's getting violated all the time.
The only thing I would add to that conversation, I think it is difficult that you'll see the prohibition, and part of that goes back to this concept of content neutrality that's mandated by the courts now. And part of that package is cities will say that we're not going to allow any type of temporary signage in the public right of way, because if you are willing to say, "Open house signs are okay", that means you're also willing to say, you know, millionaire investor seeks apprentice signs, or anything else that someone may want, you know, or.
For political.
Exchange gold for cash, whatever it is. So, if you open that floodgate to open house, which is probably the most common that you're going to see, there's not a basis for pulling back and arguing against any other type of sign. So, that's, that's why you typically say those prohibitions. And as was mentioned, it's also the most commonly violated, maybe second only to campaign signs, is my guess during election season.
Okay, any other questions on signs?
No.
With that, we wanted to open up to any other comments or questions you had for this particular article.
I've got a few.
I'm going to go back to parking. In the, in the draft, it would be page 3-19.
My pages might be a little different, so make sure that you tell us what the topic is.
Chapter 17.36, Parking and Loading, administrative draft, March 2019. Mine says page 3-19. Okay, on the top of the page, item one, talks about general parking regulations. And the last, let's see the. Okay, it says here, this is like the second from the last sentence up. Second to the last one, says, "The right to occupy and use any premises shall be contingent upon preserving the required parking and maintaining the availability to the intended users, including residents, staff, and customers." Fine. It says here, "In no case shall required parking spaces for use be rented or leased to offsite uses or used for other purposes unless specifically allowed in the chapter." I'm thinking about R1 residences, where garages are not used for parking. It says unless, or used for other purposes.
Well, doesn't that conflict with the ADU thing? I mean, if you're not maintaining your parking.
And then in the apartment areas, I mean, the question I have is, how do we enforce this? If, if I have a tenant that decides not to park in a garage, decides to, you know, just doesn't park in his garage.
That's, that's fine. What's this saying is he cannot rent that space out to somebody else to use as a parking space. Or convert it, the key question is, can you convert a garage to a rec room or some other use, which people frequently do? They can, as long as they're providing other parking as required by the code.
But the, the ADU, the state mandated ADU thing would be an exception to that?
That is correct.
Is that?
That, it says unless otherwise specifically led by this chapter, or we should say, or titled, or acted by this chapter, because the ADU parking requirements are in this chapter.
And what about garages that are rented out? Just rented out?
For example?
In, in the apartment areas or anywhere?
I don't know how they do it here, but I've lived in other cities where I rented an apartment, and they were like, oh, and if you want a garage, it's an extra $150.
I think that would be okay, because it's, it's associated with the apartment complex. So, it's a tenant of the complex that is utilizing that space. I think this is intended.
I couldn't be sublet, right?
It's intended to not be something that's going to someone else, that if I have a garage and Art has a classic car, or doesn't have the space, that I rent my garage space out to him, even though Art lives across town. That would, I believe the intent is to prohibit that type of situation, to where you're, you're basically renting out your space to someone that isn't residing on the property.
And any rentals would be for residents.
Correct.
Is that, is that, I don't have that.
I guess, yeah, I mean, interesting, I managed, I used to manage a property where the owner rented his garage from his partnership, put his vehicle in that garage, rather than park it on the street. And he lives in the city, he lived in the city. Does it matter? I mean, I'm just curious. I'm just trying to.
I think this is, because I've seen that too. You know, you have a, which I don't think we necessarily have this going forward, because we're all built out. But you've seen, I've seen those larger apartment complexes where, yeah, you get your surface lot space or your covered parking space, but if you want to have an actual garage, you're going to pay extra for that. And I don't think this is intended to prevent that, as long, because it's for the residents of that space. But if they rented it out to somebody that's down the street, that has no affiliation with that, that complex, then yes, that would be in conflict with the rig.
Next question I had has to do with. Okay. Parking for electric vehicles, page 3-24. Okay, it says here on item D, I have no problem with providing the, making EV capable and all that, but under D, it says EV ready, this is the bottom of page 3.24. EV ready and EV capable spaces and associated electric vehicles shall be provided for all new developments, no problem. And whenever a substantial addition to an existing development is proposed. I think we need to define what substantial is. I think, in our, in our code, we use 10%, if there's a 10%, if we're adding to the square footage of the, of the, of that property or whatever, I think by 10%, then we impose the other, you know, they got to start bringing stuff up to current code.
We do have a substant, we do define it, and I don't have it at my fingertips, because we had the discussion of, could there be a level of additions that stay at the staff level versus come up to the planning commission level? And that was the substantial, and I don't remember what the cutoff line was.
Well, I think we have somewhere in our code, that the number is 10%, that if we add to the existing, you know, if you're going to add on to your building, okay? And you're going to add 10% of the square footage, then you've got to comply with the site development standards. You know what I mean? You got to start bringing the building, you got to bring it up to code. I mean, you're, 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 you've got to start meeting parking requirements and everything else, if you're going to start adding on. I think that's in our code.
What's it say right now, Art? A substantial.
It just says substantial here, but I.
Substantial what?
Whenever a substantial addition to an existing development is proposed.
We will, we will double check it, but I.
I believe it's 10%. I think we need to, I'll tell you what, this is another thing, just to give you an idea. A while back, this is at least two community development directors before, there was a move in the apartment area, one of the council members, who's no longer in the council, thank God. And not any of the recent previous ones, this was way back. Had a, somebody complained to him about the inciteliness of the trash bins in the apartment area. They're trash bins. And so, code enforcement went out and started issuing citations to require them to build trash enclosures, put these bins in a walled enclosure. And I had, I managed a property, and my owner got the letter, and I'm going, "We have no space. You are, you have a five foot setback, and it is built, there's no spot for a bin." The bin was sitting out in the, kind of, in the, in between the, in the setbacks between two properties. You know, but it was open, and the bin was just sitting there. Be great to put an enclosure around it, but you can't straddle a lot line, okay? And it was like, we can't do it. I want to do it, can't do it. And so, finally, I, I got into the code and found, oh, this was approved. I mean, we're okay with it, we're not adding anything. Show me the code. We're here to require to do this, because I've got this code. Says unless he adds 10% to the value, then you can make him, you know, bring it up to the code. And they said, "Oh no, well, leave it alone, we won't do it." So, I think we have that number in there, it's 10%, you know, to.
10% of that.
Of the square footage. I just think we need to define substantial, for whatever. I'm just, the other thing has to do with bicycles. This is the next page, 3-25. Bicycle parking standards, again, no problem with new construction. Item C, A, B, C. It says, "Existing multifamily residential, non-residential that involve expansion, intensification, addition, or any other changes to the site requiring site plan approval, or a building permit." I have no problem with everything except the building permit. Okay?
In the event that they have, they're doing a minor TI in.
They have to get a building permit, that they have to comply with the bicycle standards.
I think that's reasonable. I think tying it to, similar to the EV.
Yeah, I have no problem with, if they have to come to us for some type of an approval or whatever, if we want to condition it to put it in. But I just pulled a permit, or had to pull a permit to replace a hot water heater in an apartment area.
Right.
You know what I mean? Which is bad enough, which is bad enough to have to do that, to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
$180 for a $200 heater, but whatever. I'm just exaggerating, exaggerating a little bit. But, you know, if I get a permit to put a toilet in, I don't want to have to have a, have to put a hot truck in.
What I would like to suggest, Krista Bolt, is to change that to, or any other change to the site requiring a site, a major site development permit, so that's.
I don't have any, I don't have any, just, just take it out. I mean, just end the sentence at requiring site plan approval. Any, the whole thing is okay, except, or a building permit. I mean, that's, the rest of it, I think is okay. I mean, I just, I don't mind if somebody has to come in for, to us, or whatever, to the site requiring a planning approval, we can condition stuff like that. Hang on just a second. Hang on just a second. Under carports, page 3-27. Item four. Okay, we allow carports, okay? But it says here, "A carport must include an enclosed personal storage place within the front, or a shorter area of it. And the dimensions of the space may be included to comply with outdoor storage requirements." Okay? I just think for that, that ought to, that must, must, should be a may. I mean, because it, it may not be practical to put a storage space in the front, but then just add that, that there shall be no storage of any personal property other than a car, or other than a vehicle, a currently registered vehicle, or trailer, or boats, or whatever that they're going to put into that carport. I mean, why don't we just prohibit the storage of personal property in, in carports?
Other than in a cabinet.
Other than in a cabinet. But if, if it's not practical to put a cabinet in there, or a storage, then we just have that prohibition. I mean, you don't, you don't want the personal property being stored in a, you know, in a, stacking boxes up in a, in a, in a carport. But at the same time, it may not be practical to, you know, to, to require that.
Like, a couple of things on this, and I wish Tom were here this evening, but this applies to new construction. And so, when somebody is doing new construction, they would need to account for this. And I'm, it's a current requirement, and I'm not sure what it dates to, but I think it's largely to make sure that there is room in a carport to put personal items.
No, I have no problem with, I have no problem with somebody putting the, a storage bin, or whatever they want to, you know, whatever they need to do, but if we make it mandatory, and this, this doesn't say that this pertains to new construction. This is, this is going to be a code that we adopt, it's going to apply to everything. And if we have.
We could change it.
I mean, I have no problem with, I think the goal is to keep the, well, there's two goals. To provide for personal storage is a requirement of new construction, but also, it's to keep. You don't want stuff piling, you don't, you want them using the carport for a car or a vehicle and not using it for, for storage, you know, of junk, okay?
So. I wouldn't, we can't use the word "may" in a zoning code. It's a kind of a black and white issue, so if the, if the commission's uncomfortable with the requirement, we would just take it out. There's the earlier provision of the code that we were referring to, about what you can and can't use a parking space for, includes storing your junk there, because that's not what a parking space is intended to do. So, that's covered. So, the real question is, do you want to require, in new construction, storage space?
I have no problem with that, but I just, in existing, you know.
Why don't we put in the words, "Any carport, any new construction of a carport shall require."
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, you know, I'm just.
I think it would, I think it might be better to say, "Any carport constructed in association with new construction", because if somebody just want to put a carport in an existing parking lot, this may not work. Whereas if it's new construction, new units, it, because you just don't want these, it's got to be designed in such a way that it works. And if somebody wants to put shade in, maybe it's for photovoltaic purposes or whatever, we don't want necessarily to have that tied to storage.
Now, we can't require additional parking in ADUs. But item five says, talks about that. On any residential zone property, if you're converting to an ADU, then replacement parking, it says may be, it says may, there's your may again, may be provided as either enclosed spaces in a carport, or open spaces on approved onsite locations. I thought we couldn't.
Well, that's giving options, that's in a different sense. It's not saying you have to provide it an enclosed garage. It's saying you can do it as a carport, an open space, or a garage.
So, I thought we couldn't require parking.
I think, I think the two issues here, if you want to jump in and help me out here, I think, on one hand, you're asking, when you construct an ADU, may the city properly require additional parking to be provided to account for that new living space? And the second query is, if you are creating an ADU, are you required to replace parking that was otherwise required for the principal, single-family use, for example? that was otherwise required for the principal, single-family use, for example? And so I think what state law says and what this is consistent with is, to the extent you do have to replace, you know, I'm eliminating a two-car garage of my property, but my property may be required to have two parking spaces on it. This is saying those two spaces can be provided either in a separate covered space or just somewhere else that's permissible on your property outside of setbacks and so forth.
So, so if they eliminate parking, they have to replace it, but they don't have to add additional parking to accommodate the ADU?
That's, that's my belief, is that what you're talking about is whether there's a delta with bringing the ADU and in terms of the parking required on that parcel.
The, the, two, two things in play here. Number one, if an AD, if you're on a property and you're building an ADU by converting a garage, and you're within half mile of a high-frequency transit corridor, you don't have to provide parking space for the ADU. If you're not within half a mile, you require, you can require one space for that ADU. What about those two spaces you just lost in the garage? You can park them, you may park them anywhere else on the site in an uncovered space that's allowed by code.
Like, in the driveway?
Yes. Or in a carport, or you can build another garage. So you don't have to replace the garage.
Okay, so this is-
Right. But they do have to park, they have to provide any parking-
Where they're required, where, this will apply then only if they're beyond the half a mile.
No, that, this would require, if you are also within the half mile, is that you, and I, and if you convert a garage, the city cannot require that you replace those misplaced, those displaced parking spaces with another garage.
Right. But you could replace them with open parking, just somewhere where you can park those.
Are they required to do that? Replace the parking?
Yes, absolutely. You, you can't, no, let me, let me back off that. The city doesn't have to require that they replace the parking. But if you do require that they place the parking, you, you can not tell them it has to be in a garage. You can say, it can be in an uncovered space or a covered space.
Are we requiring then? As part of this code update, are we requiring then that they-
Yes. That they have to provide two parking spaces for a single-family-
Then why don't we change that to "shall" instead of "may"?
It, it's a choice. They have the choice.
The, the parking will be required either way. I think the language we're looking right now is implying that it's a, it's a choice. It's permissive as to how you choose to provide those spaces, whether covered or uncovered on the parcel.
Hmm. I don't read it that way. But what do I know, right? I mean, I'm, I'm just, I don't want to parse it too far down, but it just seems to me that, it, it just says here, "If an existing garage is legally converted to an accessory dwelling unit, then replacement parking."
Actually, let me change that to, "Then required replacement parking."
There you go. Okay. "May be provided." Yeah. I mean, it just seems to me you're giving, all right. It could be so picky, but it'll invariably come before us, and then, all right, and then, I'm getting through it just here. In the, on page three dash two-nine, residential condominium conversion parking standards, the, number one is fine, we, you know, whatever they have is what they have as far as existing parking on a condo conversion. Item two, it says here, "In all other respects, in all other respects, off-street parking requirements and standards shall be governed by the provisions of this chapter." Okay. What about EV capable?
Yes. It would be EV capable. It would be size of the stall, length of the stall.
So if somebody were to convert a condo, apartments to a condo, they have, their existing parking is, is okay, they're gonna have to provide some type of EV in the, however, however they do that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm just raising questions here. Okay. I, I don't see anything here about tandem parking. In our existing code, we had a prohibition against tandem parking, except in the mobile home area. And, and the prohibition on tandem parking was that it cannot be counted as part of the parking requirement.
We can put that back in by being silent. It's indicating that tandem parking is not permitted anywhere. But to clarify for the mobile, for any mobile home parks, we could make sure that that gets put back in.
I think we need to make it clear even for, we just went through this. We just went through this on another project, where they were trying to count tandem parking inside of a garage as, as parking spaces.
If a change is made to that effect, we'll want to make sure to, to look at the relevant ADU law as well, because there are provisions in that legislation that says, in fact, you do have to permit tandem parking for those limited uses.
Well, that's fine. But in a, but in the multifamily, we had people, they were making it, had a deep garage, two-car deep, and they were trying to count the, the tandem parking as two spaces inside the garage. And I guess that goes along with the, I didn't look that closely, or maybe it's in here, that, that all, all of the spaces shall be accessible? You know, that, that, all parking spaces shall be accessible as part of, you know, when they're, when you're counting it? I guess that's, I know that was in our existing code.
Accessible, not meaning ADA, but-
No, accessible-